We will begin with roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Otis?
Here.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item number four is a public hearing on the proposed lease agreement with Fenders Brewing for property located at 208 West Van Dorn Street. Jason, why don't we go ahead and have a presentation from you first and then we'll move on from there?
Counsel, in front of you tonight is a lease agreement with Fenders Brewing LLC for the continued use of the Van Dorn Pocket Park, acting as a patio. This was originally put in place in 2019. Now, things have changed since 2019. In 2023, nearly $40,000 of improvements were done to the area, and just last year, ownership of Fenders has changed as well. So we thought it would be a good time to revisit the lease agreement. What's in front of you tonight would be a five-year lease, one year with four automatic renewal years if things are still going well. It would be staff's recommendation to enter into this lease agreement. It really shows what the space, it does to the space what it was designed to do. It provides vitality to the area, and it certainly gives an economic shot in the arm to the square. The considerations tonight would be $500 of anticipated revenue annually. This was kind of a unique pricing exercise. I could not find too many certain comparables of city-owned property being leased for a patio. Kind of what we did, we looked at the amount in dollars of the equipment that would expect noticeable wear by agreeing to this. Staff estimates $20,000 of equipment that has a 20-year lifespan, so roughly $1,000 a year is what we would expect it to kind of depreciate, and looking at a 50-50 split with Fenders, showing their $500 revenue for the space.
Okay. Before we get to any questions from the counsel, Jenny is going to slap my hand, so let me back up and just say, obviously, we're opening the public meeting on the proposed lease agreement for Fenders Brewing. Jenny, when was the notice published?
April 18th.
Thank you. Any written comments for or against the proposed lease?
No, sir.
Thanks. So we've already moved on to the staff report. Anything else to add before we ask if counsel's got any questions? Have you?
No, sir.
Anything from counsel? All right. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed lease? Seeing no one, I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
I need a motion then to approve Resolution 2025-44, approving lease agreement. Motion, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
All right, then. We'll move on then to item number five, which is a presentation tonight from Katz Des Moines President and CEO Greg Edwards. Greg, welcome.
Thank you. So far, it's working. Good evening, counsel, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, beloved guests. I'm sure this is why you're here tonight, so appreciate your hospitality. First off, I'm going to kick off things by showing you a quick video. Usually, I just say anything else. Let me get out of here. All right. So thank you again for having us, and we'll be brief after that five-and-a-half-minute video. I think you're familiar with our mission statement. Our mission, obviously, is to increase visitors to the metro area, conventions, meetings, sports, leisure travelers, bus tours, et cetera, et cetera. Hotel motel tax revenue, still not quite above where we were COVID-wise, but you can see the red line is, this is a tax chart here. The red line is what the CVB takes in, which is two sevenths, which is probably going to change, as you all know, and then the blue line is what the city retains. We are making headway. We're not, still not seeing business travel back to where it was prior to COVID. I think the working from home and the Zoom calls and Teams calls and all that has certainly taken effect on our business, but hopefully, we'll get through that here eventually, too. Proud of our budget breakdown. You can see that only 15% of our budget is actually spent on the administrative side, where 85% is where spent, where it should be spent, towards our sales, marketing, and our sports sales efforts. I'm going to turn it over to Trina, and she can wrap it up. Trina's our Vice President of Sales.
Good evening. So this just kind of shows the year in review. So 393 events were hosted last year, 261 of them were because of our sales efforts. So we have definite assist in our system, things that we had a hand in or helped a bid with, but things like assist, the Iowa State Fair would be an example of that, that are going to come regardless. We still support and help. So that's where that total number comes from. And then 300 new events for future years were booked as well. From the marketing side, we market all across the region in different categories. We have a ton of data that tells us where people are coming from or where we should put those efforts, and so focus on, obviously, the state of Iowa is our number one, but then Omaha, followed by Kansas City, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, Chicago. We do, we've seen a huge increase in that Chicago market, which is strong because also that length of stay, if you're coming from Chicago, helps, and we hit all the metrics to meet people where they're at. This shows the difference. Greg was talking about the lessening of business travel. What we have seen since COVID is an impact in leisure travel. So the blue line is where we were for leisure travel pre-COVID, and the pink line is where we were last year. So there's, we're seeing that kind of across the board, too, right? People are taking longer weekends. They can work from wherever they want. So we're seeing that steady increase of leisure travel. That's all I got.
That's it, folks.
Do you have any questions?
No other announcements?
It's already been announced.
I'm leaving.
I don't know how to jump the term, but I think I've observed most of, as many of these as anybody. Just didn't want to say, "Thank you, Greg." I'm kind of hit and miss on regionalization, but never when you're here to share your message. It's always encouraging to get puffed up about Des Moines, and that usually happens, that always happens, I should say. And so I wish you well in your retirement and got some big shoes to fill. So, thank you.
Yeah, I plan to retire the end of July. The board will probably have somebody on board by the first part of June. Putting media in the room. Trina's a candidate, but the board did decide to do a national search anyway, just to keep it clean or whatever. So we're hopeful that things will work out, and we'll have a new leader here before long.
Thank you, Greg. It's always a pleasure interacting with you, Greg. So thank you very much, and Trina, thank you very much for being here tonight, too. So we will move on to item number six on our agenda. This is the public comment period, the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Jenny, has anyone submitted a card to present?
No one's asked to speak, but I did receive written comments from Jerry and Barb Greenwell at 2620 East South Side Drive, and those comments have been included in your packet.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would wish to speak on any topics? Hearing none, then. We will move on to item number seven, which is consent items, and I'll ask for a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Got now.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
So we're going to move on then to eight, which is a long list of business items tonight. A, 8A, first reading of ordinance 2025-500, amending Chapter 63, speed regulations, Section 63.04, special speed restrictions on East South Side Drive. Chief?
All right, thank you. Currently, there is no speed limit set to East South Side Drive between Northwest 44th and South 14th Street. The resolution is proposing we set that at 35 miles per hour. I think we need to get that in there, given the current development that's going on in the area. Any questions?
Counsel? All right, then. We'll ask for a motion and a second on A, first reading of ordinance 2025-500, amending Chapter 63, speed regulations, Section 63.04, special speed restrictions on East South Side Drive. Motion? Second?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Sarchet, or Savage, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
We will move on to--
Sorry, but is, can we waive the second and third reading on this? Is, or since it's not--
I failed to put it on the agenda, but I can put it on the next agenda as a second and waive the third.
Okay.
See, yeah, okay. I mean--
On the second and waive the third, then.
We'll weigh in on that when we get there, but it seems like a straightforward thing to me.
Okay. We'll do that at the next meeting, then. Moving on then to B, Resolution 2025-51, reapproving the site plan for Leonard Senior Living. Travis?
So for counsel's consideration tonight is the original site plan for Leonard Senior Living that was approved back in March of 2023. Since that time, the developer has been working on financing. The developer has informed us that the last 18 months were, I'm going to put words in your mouth, Ross, brutal, but they feel that they're making progress on financing of this project. They feel that a late, or a mid-to-late summer start seems reasonable at this point, and that they would like it reapproved to assist in discussions with the folks that they're seeking finance from. The reason that the counsel is seeing this again tonight, you approved a one-year extension towards the tail end of last year. Your municipal code allows an extension without revisiting it at the P&amp;Z level for up to one calendar year, or a site plan remains valid during that period of time or when actual construction commences and is proceeding at a reasonable rate. Since the project has not started, because actual construction as defined by Polk City Code is not proceeding, we need to reapprove this. So this would basically reset the clock to be April 2026 would be when it expires again with that optional one-year calendar, or one calendar year extension, should the project not proceed by that point in time. The only thing that has changed on this is that the approval is subject to fewer things, because when this was originally approved, it was also approved alongside the final plat, which has since been recorded. So we, both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommend approval of the site planned as submitted, and we're looking forward to this project getting off the ground here. So I'd be happy to answer any question, as well as Ross and Brian are here with the developer.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, Ross or Brian?
Travis said it perfectly. 2024 was a little contentious, I think, with the elections that may describe. So it was just a little difficult raising funds, but last month has been really good as far as conversations and funds coming. So I think this summer is probably a realistic goal is what we're shooting for, so.
Counsel, any questions?
No questions from me. Glad to hear that. Excited about this now as I was before, and I get, if questions correlate to interest, there's interest out there.
Yeah. We've been fielding a lot of calls and people hitting us up, knowing when we're coming, so, from the market, which is great, so.
Thanks. So I would just make a minor comment, and that, you know, Parker is a very heavily-traveled street, and this is a question that I've begun to get from people about the looks of the property. I've noticed that the shed in particular has deteriorated substantially with holes in the roof. I'm, I mean, I'm concerned about kids. We're headed for summer, getting into that shed. I just wonder, will, do you have to wait for summer to take that house and shed down, or is there a way to, like, move on that a little sooner?
The only issue is funds. So we've got a group of investors that put a couple million dollars into this project already, and they are willing to hold that cash. And the new investors that we've received have expressed interest in putting more cash in, but they want to make sure that the rest of the funds are there. So it's just a function of getting enough dollars in that we can do the demo of the home or the shed or whatever's out there at this point, and taking those down. And getting that from investors is a little difficult, especially without knowing the approvals. So we're trying to get reapproval so we can start having some of those conversations, but it is just a pure funding issue at this point, making the land payments and keeping up on the lawn and those sorts of things, and then trying to tear that down. If we tear that down, then obviously, we'd want to tear down the house as well. So we're trying to find a way to get all of that done at one time, and so.
So I imagine that will be step one--
It will.
--of the project.
It will, yes.
Okay.
As quick as we can do it, we'd love to have it, too. We don't want to have anything out there from a liability standpoint, as any more than the city does. So we're working towards that, but it's been tricky conversations until the last few months. Hopefully, we're getting close.
Okay. Okay, so we'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2025-51, reapproving site plan for Leonard Senior Living.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to C then, Snyder and Associates Professional Services Agreement for Iowa 415 and Northwest 44th Street intersection. And Chelsea, you're going to speak on that.
Yes, thank you for the city council's review and consideration tonight. It's a professional services agreement between the City of Polk City and Snyder and Associates, and this is for a concept study at the intersection of Highway 415 and Northwest 44th Street. City staff began having discussions on a traffic study at this intersection after we received feedback from the 2024 Allure at Saylorville rezoning, and a lot of those Polk County residents had some concerns about traffic at that intersection in particular. So for this reason, we began having conversations with both the developer and the other four government agencies that have a jurisdiction at that intersection. We have met over the past six months with the developer of Allure at Saylorville, the City of Ankeny, Polk County, and the Iowa Department of Transportation. The cost-sharing arrangement that we are proposing for this professional services agreement is that the City of Polk City would be the client for the study, and the four government agencies would pay $20,000, and the developer would be responsible for $25,000 of the study. Do any of the council members have any questions on the professional services agreement?
So the driver here is the Allure development?
It is. We think that future developments will benefit from the study as well, and any improvements that we make to the intersection would help spur development in the vicinity. I would ask that the council approve the professional services agreement contingent on the city entering into cooperative service agreements with both the City of Ankeny, Polk County, the Department of Transportation, and then we'd have a development agreement on a future agenda with the developer. So I'd ask if you are considering this tonight to make a contingent on us entering into those agreements.
Anyone else on counsel? All right. Okay, then. We will move forward with this, and I'll ask for a motion on Snyder and Associates Professional Service Agreement for Iowa 415 and Northwest 44th Street intersection.
So moved.
And a second? And a roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
abstained.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
No.
Moving on then to item D, first reading of ordinance 2025-300, amending Chapter 92, water rates, Section 92.02, rates for service. Chelsea, you have a presentation?
Yes, I will provide a report on this topic tonight. So for the counsel to consider tonight is the first reading of the water rate ordinance. I am recommending an 8% increase to water rates effective with the new fiscal year, which begins July 1st. The recommendation rate increase is reflective of PFM's recommendation from the water utility cash flows, which were completed in 2024, and those are available in the council packet as well as the city's website tonight. I just want to point out, 8% is a relatively large increase. This is largely attributed to two large capital projects that the city is going to fund with water revenues. The first one is the Water Tower Project. The cost of the Water Tower Project is approximately $8 million, and then we also have the costs associated with our buy-in for Central Iowa Water Works, which is approximately $2 million. So that is why the rate increase is recommended at 8% tonight. Just letting you all know, I know that PFM has updated our cash flows on an annual basis, and I think they will continue to update those as needed. I, not a lot has changed from when they came a year ago. Specifically, you know, we were doing the large Water Tower Project and then the buy-in to CIWW. So I know that they weren't here to make the presentation before our rate increases tonight, but we will continue to have them come and evaluate the city's water cash flows. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I understand the increase, and unfortunate that it is what it is, but as you alluded to with the timing of Central Iowa and the Water Tower, it's necessary. Were we going to revisit the rate structure due to the changes from Des Moines Water Works to Central Iowa Water Works, and most specifically, the irrigation rates as the peak usage days don't have the same impact that they did with Des Moines Water Works?
We talked about visiting the rate structure, and that is something that is certainly an option. I would recommend the council wait to review that rate structure until next year, prior to the following fiscal year. CIWW is currently having conversations with all of the cities on what they need for additional capacity. Those decisions have to be made by July, so if Polk City decides that we're going to need additional capacity, I could see those rates needing to be adjusted anyway. So my recommendation would be, let's have that conversation next year.
Makes sense.
All right. Anything else?
Looking forward, in the rate study that we got last year, PFM is recommending 8% increases for the next several years. I understand this year, we're looking at the Central Iowa Water Works buy-in and the Water Tower Project. Do we have any idea what we're trying to account for with the ongoing 8% increases?
Most of the 8% increase is particular to the Water Tower Project and how substantial that project is. If you all recall, half of that project was being financed with water revenue. I don't have anything further out than what's in the packet, but that's why you would update your water cash flows every few years so that it does go a little further out. Does that answer your question, Nick?
Kind of, sorta. I'm just not entirely sure. If the 8% increase isn't cutting it this year, is it just that we just need to space out further how much we actually need to raise water rates to cover the cost of these projects? Am I phrasing that in a way that makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Does this 8% rate increase cover what we need for the Water Tower, or is it a much larger number that we are trying to spread out over several years?
Yeah. What I remember is it would need to be increased. You could either do a very large increase now-- You could either do a very large increase now to correspond with the need, the income needs going forward, or spread it out, because an 8% is not going to justify the bond for the Water Tower. So, it's essentially 8% over time gets you that even spread out. Now, what it doesn't do is account for other factors that may happen between now and then, so it's, unfortunately, it's probably a minimum of 8% going forward, which doesn't give me a whole lot of joy to say, but that...
He, Rob is correct. PFM has traditionally done like a five-year projection, and they include any of our CIP projects in that, if we're going to fund CIP projects with water rates, so it would include everything within the next five years that we projected when we did the cash-rate utility flow.
All right, understood.
Okay.
Anything else? Then, we need a motion to approve First Reading of Ordinance 2025-300, Amending Chapter 92, Water Rates, Section 92.02, Rates for Service. Motion, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Moving on, then, to item E, First Reading of Ordinance 2025-400, Amending Chapter 99, Sewer Service Charges, Section 99.01. Chelsea, you have a report?
Yes, so for the council's review tonight is the first reading for an ordinance related to sewer rates. I am recommending a 5.5% increase to sewer rates effective with the new fiscal year, and that recommendation is, again, based off of the sanitary sewer utility cash flows completed in 2024 by PFM. Just want to point out that these rate increases are largely attributed to the increased costs associated with the WRA, specifically their debt issuance for large capital projects for the wastewater facility and general operations for the sanitary sewer system. Does anybody have any questions about the sanitary sewer rate ordinance?
Counsel? All right, then, we will ask for a motion to approve First Reading of Ordinance 2025-400, Amending Chapter 99, Sewer Service Charges, Section 99.01. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Item number F, Third Reading of Ordinance 2025-200, Amending Chapter 100, Sewer Connection Fees to Add the Southeast Sanitary Sewer District, the North Sanitary Sewer District, the Northeast Sanitary Sewer District, and Big Creek Valley Sanitary Sewer District. I'll ask for a motion to approve...
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Anything from counsel? We'll do, roll call, then.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Moving on to item number nine, there are three proclamations here tonight. So, whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improving building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community to, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local, state, tribal, territorial, and federal building safety and fire prevention departments in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Steve Karsten, Mayor of City of Polk City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. The second proclamation is related to Professional Municipal Clerks Week. I, Steve Karsten, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, do recognize the week of May 4 through 10, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And finally, number three, National Police Week 2025. I, Steve Karsten, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the week of May 11 through 17, 2025, as National Police Week in Polk City, Iowa, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. I urge all citizens to recognize these officers' faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities. So, thank you, everybody who serves in Polk City in relation to those proclamations. Moving on, then, to Reports and Particulars, item number 10. Staff, anything to add? How about you, Chelsea?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Counsel? Anything?
I would like to bring up one thing. So, I know this weekend was busy, and there was some online discussion about the sports complex, and having gone through town, and we talked about it earlier today, and given this a little bit of thought, I don't know that it's fair to expect the police response that we had. I, again, was there, saw it, it was needed, appreciate it, but putting both the RPD and the county in that position isn't ideal, and I know the club's stance is that their, I don't want to phrase this, ability to affect the schedule is limited. I have a little bit of difficulty understanding that, but I would suggest that we've probably hit an inflection point and should be proactive in trying to address it. So, Jason, as the Parks and Rec Director, if you are willing, and this is just a suggestion, and others can weigh in or overrule or come up with a better option, but I do think it's prudent to have a discussion with both soccer, Little League, and softball about the schedules, because it does seem like we have a late morning Saturday problem, and not so much even Sunday or Saturday afternoon, and so with some tweaks, I'd rather have tough conversations now without an accident under our belt, or, God forbid, something worse, and so I know that's not going to be well-received, and believe me, as a kid, as a parent of a kid, I much prefer the 9:00 AM game over the 3:00 PM game, but I do think we're at a point where maybe need to be a little bit more aggressive with those discussions, so just a suggestion.
Well put. Anything else from counsel? I don't have anything to add at this time. So, the next item on our agenda is item number 11, which is Closed Session Under Code of Iowa. And the way that works, folks, is the council makes a motion and a second to go into Closed Session, and everyone who's not involved in that is thanked for being here and then invited to go. So, I'll ask counsel to make a motion to go into Closed Session.
So moved.
And a second. And roll call, please.
Otis? Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.